We will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Renata.
McEvers.
Here.
Gookin.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Eddinger.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Please rise for the invocation, Pastor Dave Hoyt.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to come and be with you tonight. Tonight, we come with hopeful hearts as we consider and think of Sergeant Greg Moore and his family. And so first and foremost, just want to lift him up tonight in our prayer. And so if you'll join with me, let's bow our heads and pray. Father, we come to you this evening, God, and we ask, Lord, that you would do a miracle for Greg, Lord, that you would preserve his life, God. And, Lord, we thank you for just the wonderful guy that he is, his family, Lord, we lift him up, we lift up his wife and his kids to you, Lord, pray that you would bring peace and comfort to them now, Father, during this time. And, Lord, we just ask that you would be with them. And, God, we also ask for his fellow coworkers, Lord, that you would be with them as well, Lord, and that as their hearts are heavy, Lord, that they would find hope in you. We pray for their families who also wear this and carry this burden along with them and ask that you would, Lord, be a light for them as well during this time, God. And so, once again, Lord, we just come to you and we ask for Greg, Lord, that you would preserve his life, God, that you would, Lord, just bring healing to his physical body, Lord, and that you would do a work there for him and that he would indeed come through, God. And so we trust you with his life, Lord. And, God, now we just ask for this team here, Lord, these leaders of our city, our great city, and, Lord, these people who have been entrusted with the leadership. And, Lord, during these times in which we live, which conventional wisdom, the wisdom of man seems to struggle with finding answers, God, I pray that you would give these guys godly wisdom, God, wisdom that goes beyond their experience, wisdom that goes beyond their ability even to lead us, Lord, to lead this community in the way we should go, Lord, and that you would really, Lord, that you've appointed these guys for a time as this, that you've brought them to this place. And so I just pray that they would lead well, God, that you would let them lead with courage, God, that you would give them unity and heart, and, Lord, that they would have just a peace of mind as they lead our community through this time, this tumultuous time, God, and that we would really look to you, God, we do, we look to you for hope and for peace during this time. And, God, I just pray for wisdom again here, Lord, for these guys and gals as they lead. And, Lord, we thank you for your faithfulness to us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
Steve, please, and the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Today has been a tragic day for our city. Our entire community is hurting due to the wounding of Police Sergeant Greg Moore. Sergeant Moore was doing what he did every day. He put on his uniform. He was protecting us. He's done an outstanding of protecting the citizens of Coeur d'Alene for over 16 years. So tonight, our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, our entire police force, and all that knew him. Tonight, we're going to have a bit of an abbreviated schedule. And if we could get a motion for the amended agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend our agenda to include only the following items: the consent calendar, announcements, public hearing, and executive session. All other items will be continued at the next council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will move on to the consent calendar. Who would like, Woody, would you like to lead us through the consent calendar?
Yes, Your Honor. Oh, I think I have the old one. Hang on here. Thank you. I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 15-018, which includes agreement for waiving opposition to annexation for Paul and Julie. Oh, boy, last name, can't get it close.
Stritchick.
Scotch it. Thank you. Approval of contract for Knife River Corporation for the 2015 overlay project, declaration of surplus of a 1995 Crown Vic, a 2000 Chevy Impala, and a 1986 Astro van. Also, approval of contract with T. Laverre Equipment and Excavation for the 2015 Open Trench Project, approval of school resource officer agreement with the Coeur d'Alene School District 271, and the approval of the school resource officer agreement with North Idaho College.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Here.
Gookin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to announcements. I have an appointment of Lynn Fleming and Louis Rumppler to our planning commission.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We will move on to our public hearing. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. Does any member, council member, have a conflict of interest that should be disclosed? Okay. So this is a quasi-judicial, ZC-1-15, proposed zone change from R-12 to C-17 by Miller Development, 3113 North Government Way. And then we have a staff report by Lori Burchette from the planning department.
Thank you, Mayor Woodmire. The project that you have before you is a zone change request from R-12 to C-17. This shows an aerial of the property. It's off from Government Way and does have access from Second Avenue to the property, but not through the property, excuse me. And the City Council must consider this request and make separate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. This was heard by our planning commission and was recommended approval for this, so that you know. The first finding that you'd have to find is that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan, that the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by the existing streets, public facilities, and services, that the physical characteristics of the site make or do not make it suitable for the request at this time, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. The first finding, BAA, that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The property is designated as a transition area. In this area where the character of the neighborhoods is in transition and should be developed with care. The designation is in the northeast Prairie area and is composed of a variety of zoning districts in this area. There have been several previous zone change requests from R-12 to C-17 in this area. As you can see, all of these zone changes that are shown on here in green were approved from R-12 to C-17. Staff received comments from city departments regarding the zone change request. The Water Department had noted that future development will require an extension of adequate water facilities, but there is an existing single domestic water service extended from Government Way. The wastewater utility had noted that they have no objections to this zone change request. And I did want to note that there is a line and manhole that does extend through Second Avenue that you can see to the north property boundary. And according to a recent project review for this property a couple of months ago, it was noted that the public sewer extension would be required to and through the property, so it would go all the way to the south part of the property. And currently, there are no known downstream capacity issues in the public sewer system. So it does have adequate services for water and wastewater to the property. And then depending on the type of development that would occur on the property, the owner would have to extend those services. The Engineering Department noted that the applicant would be required to include a stormwater management plan with any building permit that would be submitted for the subject property. At the time, they had done a trip generation manual, had categorized for storage facility, and that they noted that the vehicle movements to and from the facilities of this nature would tend to be sporadic in nature, not concentrated during peak vehicle movements. The Fire Department had noted that they have no comments or conditions attached to this request, and they did confirm that there are two options for two access points, or that there are multiple options for two access points for this parcel, including access from Second Street and from the access easement that is directly from Government Way. So they would be able to meet the two access point requirement. The physical characteristics of the site make or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. There are no topographical or physical constraints that would make it unsuitable for the proposed C-17 zoning request. Finding B-11, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and existing land uses. The property zone change would not impact traffic generation from the subject property. This is submitted by, from our Engineering Department, Chris Bates. The current zone of the property is R-12, and there is C-17 surrounding the property, and then there is some R-12 and some limited commercial to the north as well. The current land use designation is mixed between a single family, which you can see in the yellow, and then that joins, is part of the subject property, as well as some vacant property. In the red, it's commercial zoning district, I'm sorry, commercial uses, and then some additional single-family uses. There are no recommended conditions associated with this request. Public notices were mailed on 4/17/2015. And the City Council must consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. And your findings worksheet is attached to the staff report. May I entertain any questions that you might have for staff?
Okay, thank you, Lori. Woody?
Lori, in the minutes from the Planning Commission, you mentioned that the Fire Department wanted two accesses, and it was kind of leaning towards Second Street. Is that correct?
Right. During the review, I think the Fire Department was interested in having Second Street. And it's my understanding that the applicant is intending to extend Second Street through their property. But at this time, the Fire Department was satisfied that they would have adequate access to the property from Second and be able to accommodate two access points, actually, from that Second Street.
Thank you.
Dan.
This is a zone change. So what we're doing is we're talking about the impact of a zone and not a project.
Correct.
But yet, the staff report contains several notices where it talks about the project. So the water impact says, "Future development of the property will require extension of adequate water facilities," but is not required for the proposed zone change. Okay, that wasn't germane. The applicant will be required, this is under stormwater, to recruit a stormwater management plan with any building permit submittal for the subject property. Traffic streets, the ITD trip generation manual does not categorize storage facilities. Fire, "Any requirements per the International Fire Code shall be reviewed and assessed during the permit process." Wastewater, "Any wastewater conditions will be addressed during the permitting process." We're not permitting something tonight. We're doing a zone change.
Correct.
And a zone change involves impacts beyond the specific proposed use that is being presented tonight. So, in my opinion, the staff report's inadequate because it doesn't provide me enough information to make a decision on an impact on, it's a C-17, right?
Correct.
Which means they can build a hotel there. None of this staff report talks about the impact of that potential.
Right, and I appreciate those comments. The water and wastewater had noted that there are facilities that extends to the property, and it's my understanding that wastewater, the requirement from Panhandle Health District is that for it to be serviceable or to the property, it has to be within 200 feet. And there is a main and manhole line that extends to the property. And then what the departments are concerned with is that most of their review is going to be happening at building permit time.
And that happens anyway, right? But our function here tonight is to talk about changing a zone that includes a lot more uses, like just about anything, and potentially could impact the city's stormwater, wastewater, streets, fire, all that stuff, and that's not in the report.
Mayor, I have a question for Dan. Dan, is that not on page nine of our report with what is allowed and not allowed in R-12 and C-17? That's not what you're referring to?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm referring to. So you're correct in that these are all the different things that can go on in this zone. And the comments on the staff report don't really, in my opinion, relate to that. What they do is they discuss a specific use, which is apparently a storage facility. But as we all know, once we change a zone, anything that's allowed in that zone can happen. And to me, that's the impact that I want to consider because even though it could be a storage facility for the next 600 years, it could also get sold, and there could be something else that can happen, and we could create a potential headache for someone down the road because we didn't have the foresight to say, well, jeez, this is C-17. There could be a hotel here. There could be high-density houses here, and all of a sudden, our sewer pipes aren't up to capacity, our street's not up to capacity, the fire's going to have an issue with that, and it's not in the report.
Right. And the, this, I suppose, during the comment review process, they commented standard based on their general review. And then there was also attached to a project review, and I think there may have been some concern, or some confusion on which to comment on for this report. And the Engineering Department had spoke to traffic, as the proposed zone change will not impact traffic generation from the subject property. Water and wastewater, their only requirement at this time for the zone change isn't necessarily to look at the specific use because they look at that at building permit time. However, they do need to say that it can be adequately served in that the facilities are available at the site within a...
But that's not in here.
So, for, right, I think that wastewater, it was, it has the no objections to the zone change request, and I followed up with the wastewater department and added, to be able to have the slide in here so that it shows where that line is. And we do have it in our project review that it's in there, however, that's not in your staff report, so.
Other questions for Lori?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Your Honor, I understand what councilperson, councilmember, Gookin, Councilman Gookin is expressing. I think from the staff's point of view, they thought they were providing that, and obviously, from there, from Mr. Gookin's point of view, they are not. But we'll make sure, and in future reports provide, that it can be adequately served to its maximum density. I think that's what he's looking for. Is that correct, Councilman Gookin?
Actually, I'd like to make a motion to send this item back to staff and have them resubmit it at the next meeting with the proper staff reports.
I guess my question there would be if there is a change in staff reports, does it got to have to go back through the whole entire process? Would it need to go back through planning and zoning?
Sorry, I'm a little bit out of practice. No, it would not. I think what Councilmember Gookin is asking for is some additional information. The Planning Commission determines the appropriateness of this going through. What council does is look at the zoning and determine, is this consistent with the surrounding zoning? Is it consistent with our comprehensive plan? Should it be in the city, or should it be changed as requested? So I don't think it would need to go back through the whole planning process.
Okay. So Dan does have a motion on the floor to send this back for more staff work. Is there a second on that?
I have a question regarding that, then, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So the Planning Commission reviewed Mr. Gookin's concerns. However, they're not in our report specifically. Is that be a good summation of?
The Planning Commission reviewed it under the same staff report with the information provided in there. So they did review it under, the wastewater utility has no objections to this zone change request in regards to wastewater. And I followed up with additional information between the Planning Commission and today in my presentation to be able to address some of those issues and highlight where that information, or where the manhole and line were located, so that you had that additional information in the record.
Mr. Mayor, I see there's some folks that have signed up to give testimony. Dan, would you mind holding off on your motion until?
Well, the motion, the motion isn't on the project. So, and I'm not going to comment on the project because we have a quasi-judicial thing going on here. The motion's mostly on the staff report, which is basically, I want to make sure that if we do a zone change, not this project, but a zone change, that every consideration has been made by staff for that zone change, and I'm not seeing enough of it here.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
If it dies, it dies.
I've got a question.
Ron.
Is this, is it urgent that this be passed tonight?
It's the applicant, I guess.
Well, it depends on who you're talking to. Councilmember Eddinger, I'm sure from the applicant's point of view, it is. When we were looking at what we would put off till another meeting and what we would hear tonight, we heard this because it had been advertised for tonight and because it was a public hearing. And if we didn't hear it tonight, we would be moving substantially down the road.
Okay, what?
I wonder if you could put up the existing land use map again so we can kind of see that evolution of how this part of Government Way has evolved to C-17.
Here's the current zoning, and then here's the current land use.
There's some with dates on it, I believe.
And then we can go to the zone change. These are the surrounding properties that have received a zone change approved from R-12 to R-17 in the surrounding area. The subject property has the dotted line, and you can see the areas that, and all of these were R-12 to C-17.
So it has been evolving towards that for many years. Some of those, where I was on planning and zoning for some of those, on the backside Second Street, we've been waiting to get Second Street through, basically on that side. That's what's going to make Second Street move, as I recall, is some development on the Government Way side. So I think this is moving in that direction. So I think the history speaks for itself that it fits, the zoning fits.
Let's deal with Dan's motion. So is there a second of Dan's motion? So there's not, so we will continue. Then is there any more questions for Lori at this time? Okay, thank you. We will move to the applicant, who has 10 minutes, if he chooses to present.
Thank you. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Hi, my name's Chad Oakland. I am the owner of Miller Development Group. We've had, obviously, the staff report does reference a mini storage unit. That's our plan. Councilman Gookin is correct that that probably has nothing to do with the zone change. But I do know that from talking with staff and other conversations that, how I understand it, the utilities are there could service anything up to a C-17. And I was just going to reference, you mentioned something about density, high-density housing. I think if I adhere to the pocket housing rule, I could probably put up to 32 units there right now without a zone change. So I think that conversation with staff, conversation with us, probably did lean towards what my intention is. But I do appreciate your question as to the zone change versus the project.
Okay. Are there any other, any questions for Chad?
Sure, Roland, again, Chad, thank you for understanding. It's like, I mean, and I've read what the project is. It sounds fine. It looks like it fits in. I mean, I'll be interested to hear what the rest of them say, but, I mean, I'm just thinking down the road, and there have been instances where we've had to deal with problems that have happened in the past where something was changed and no consideration was really made from, you know, an impact, and we've ended up with having to deal with a problem, which, of course, is not, wouldn't be my problem or your problem, but it's problems in the future. And that's all I'm trying to avoid is just to make sure that we're totally kosher with that. But as far as your project is concerned, I mean, that's like, that seems to be what they address in the staff report, and it says, hey, we don't have an issue, we don't have an issue, and storage units are wonderful. I mean, I'll, we'll hear what the public has to say, but my perception of them is that they're fine, so.
And maybe, I think, I believe Mr. Becker is here from Wastewater. If he had some questions, maybe he would be the guy to ask. I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Chad? Okay. I guess we'll move on to the next.
Thank you.
I probably should have opened up the public testimony before Chad spoke. Is that correct? So, all right. So I will open up a public testimony at this point. Is there a primary opponent of this project? I do not believe there is a primary opponent. So we will move on to see if there is other speakers. I have people that are signed up on this list. I have John Colhaneck. He didn't mark if he was in favor or opposition. Is John here?
I'm here.
In favor or opposed?
Favor.
Favor, okay. So then I had Roberta Nelmar, who is in favor, doesn't wish to testify. Mr. Colhaneck doesn't wish to testify. Art Nelmar, in favor, does not wish to testify. Is there anyone else that's not on this, not on this list that I just read off? Anyone else that is wishing to testify? Okay. Well, I guess you also have a chance for summation, Chad. There's probably not much to sum up there.
Do I have to swear anything? Am I good to go?
You're good.
I just wanted you to note that Mr. Colhaneck, who is in favor, lives and owns a property just to the south of the subject. So just so you guys have that knowledge of where he is located, where that, those two buildings are. I don't know if that makes a difference.
And what's that zone?
On Government Way, right.
Oh, no, he would, he, his access comes off of Government Way. He's going to be sandwiched between Second Street. Like, he'll have Second Street to the north and to the south of his property right now, but he does live adjacent to the subject property.
Okay. Kiki, did you have a question?
And he's, is that property a zone commercial or a zone R?
I believe he has a zone residential right now, R-17?
R-12.
R-12, excuse me.
Dan, Jim?
That brings up another question. So if I understand it right, you're going to bring Second Street down.
Yeah, I understand that if any project that would, no matter what would be done, I have to bring that down to the southern end of my property.
And that is in the staff report.
Well, we got one thing, right.
It's cool. And, but, but you're saying that below, there's no intention for the immediate future to make that connection.
I believe that'd be a question for your staff. It probably has to do with Mr. Colhaneck still lives there.
But it's nothing you know about, so.
Nothing I know about.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chad. So if there's no one else that would like to speak, I will close the public testimony, and then I'll look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for accepting the ZC-1-15 proposed zone change from R-12 to C-17 by Miller Development and to direct staff to do the findings and adopting the findings from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I will be voting in favor of this, but I do want to just admonish staff to provide us with adequate staffing reports in the future so that we don't run into those headaches down the road. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Motion carried. We have a motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to put council into executive session under Idaho Code 67, 2345, subsection C, to conduct deliberations concerning labor negotiations or to acquire an interest in property, real property, which is not owned by a public agency.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
We'll move into executive session.